Yours is on.
Okay, okay. Welcome to the meeting. Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin, Board of County Highway Commissioners, April 22, 2022. Lander County Courthouse Chambers, Courthouse Commissioners Chambers, 50 State Route 305, Battle Mountain, Nevada. Also via teleconference at Austin Courthouse Commission Office, 122 Main Street, Austin, Nevada. Via audio conferencing by go-to meeting. We're going to call this order. JR, would you lead us in the polls, please?
I would lead this to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence, please. Okay. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12 to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and the items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars.
Good morning. I did attend the Kingston Town Board meeting last Thursday, and the fundraiser that they have every summer is actually being postponed. But they are setting it for the 3rd of September, which is the first Saturday in September. So they are still going to have it, but they're just kind of delaying that a little bit. And just coming up, just to put on the record, on May 3rd, we will be having a town hall meeting that is going to be hosted by A&amp;M Engineering for our roads in Austin. So we're looking forward to that. That's going to be one of three, is what Erin tells me. So this is the first one since they've taken over from Summit. So we're looking forward to that.
No, I know. Maybe we'll have a pull-off meeting on Monday if there's one.
I attended a Conservation District meeting. It was pretty short and sweet, just to prove some basic weed spraying projects. I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. Everything that I have will be for the end of the meeting for possible agenda, future agenda items.
Okay, public comment for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Is there any public comment? Consent agenda. Okay, number one, approval of April 22, 2022 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of March 21, 2022 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of March 22, 2022 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of March 24, 2022 Minutes. Five, approval of April 14, 2022 Minutes. And six, approval of change, approval of payroll change requests.
Number one you read in is April 22. It should be April 28.
28, sorry.
So I didn't receive any minutes. Anybody else?
Or payroll change requests.
Yeah, so I'll just make a motion to approve number one, the Agenda Notice.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. We need to pull one check. Well, Commissioners, for the discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove payment of bills, we need to pull check 215269.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass this. Okay, now we need a motion for check number 215269.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I recuse myself. That is my travel. Thank you.
Right. Okay. Number two, we start on number two now, or do we need to wait until 9:15 exactly?
We need to wait until 9:15 exactly.
Okay, then we're going to take a 10-minute break because we have to do this on time. Or do you want to go to another one?
Well, we're not going to have time to do any report.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, we're just going to wait. We're going to wait.
We said we'll be opening up a public meeting at 9:15.
Right, we'll open it up again at 9:15. So we're just going to take a break until 9:15.
Throw in break.
This conference, this conference will now be recorded.
Situation in that we need to be right on the 9:15. Public hearing for discussion and possible action to determine the fair market value of 79.82 acres of real property, APN 01043032, based on a disinterested competent real estate appraiser's final conclusion of $32,000. Appraisal done at the request of Lander County by Anthony J. Rinn, MAISRA, Certified General Appraiser Number A0000090-CG on October 27, 2021, and all matters properly related thereto.
Commissioners, what this is, is you are setting the value pursuant to, in an open meeting, pursuant to a notice that was sent out to the public by resolution, a formal resolution, and that was 2022-02, I believe. So we are setting, based on the appraisal, the value of the 89, approximately 89-point whatever acres.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. So that's what we're doing. 79.82 acres of real property. And you'll see the appraisal there, the backup. So we're just setting the evaluation. But first, since this is a public hearing, I would ask, request that you ask the audience if they have any comments regarding this item.
Thirty-one present or on the phones that has any questions about this?
About the valuation.
About the value of this property, 79.82.
That's the next one.
Just to comment on it, in going through the commercial appraisals information. He gave us actually five of the most recent sales on it to give us an idea. And I note that the last three were all done last year, in 2021. So we're really right up to value. There was two in May, and all of them have gone up a little bit. And so the very last one that was done, which was May 20th in 2021, which is for 81 acres, and that came out $401.38 on the adjusted price. So I think we're right in there. I mean, it's all current, and that's what we go by, are the experts. So I think the 400 an acre comes out rather well at the $32,000 that we rounded it off to.
Anyone else? I'll call for a motion.
So is the motion to accept the value, is that what we need?
Yes, and to set the value. You're basically setting the value of that piece of property, based on the value.
Agreeing to what the appraiser said.
Yes, based on the appraisal.
Well, I guess I'll make the motion to set the value of the 79.82 at the appraised price of $32,000.
I'll second the motion.
Kathy made the motion. Brian seconded it. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Number three.
Okay, we need, close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing on number two, and we will go to number three. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove Resolution Number 2022-3 for adopting declaring Lander County's intention to sell 79.82 acres of real property, APN 01043032, at auction. This resolution describes the property to be sold specific.
Specific.
The minimum price and terms which it will be sold, fixes a time and place at which the sealed bids will be received and considered, and a procedure for giving notice to the public and all other matters related to. So we need this resolution written in?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 2022-03.
With the motion, Arthur. Whoever's making the motion, read the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion.
We need public comment. Come on up.
Should I read the resolution in before public comment?
Well, that would answer about 90% of her questions.
Yeah, that'd be good. All right.
Do you want to read it in?
Yes, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2022-03, the Board of Lander County Commissioners. Summary, a resolution declaring Lander County's intention to sell real property, requirements of sale, notice and procedure for conducting the sale. Whereas Lander County owns a 79.82-acre parcel of land located south of the southwest intersection of Little Cottonwood Canyon Road and State Highway 305, Lander County, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820, APN 010.430-32. And whereas NRS 244.282 describes the process and procedure for the sale of real property at auction. And whereas, on October 27, 2021, Anthony J. Rinn, MAISRA, Certified General Appraiser, appraised the above-described property, APN 010-430-32, at the request of Lander County and ascertained the land value as of October 25, 2021, to be $32,000. And whereas, costs associated with the appraisal and publication of all notices with regard to the subject property includes $3,500 appraisal costs with approximately $1,137 publication costs for a total of $4,637. And now therefore be it resolved that this board, in open meeting at a public hearing, set for the purpose of determining the fair market value of the property based on a disinterested competent real estate's appraiser's final value conclusion, hereby declares its intention to sell real property, APN-010-430-32, at auction. And be it further resolved that this board sets the minimum price of the subject property to be $36,637, which includes the $32,000 appraisal land value and $4,637 in associated costs. And the terms upon which the property will be sold are: cash, with the transaction to close within 60 days. And be it further resolved that the auction will be held at a public meeting of the board at its regular place of meeting on May 26, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., at which time sealed bids will be received and considered. And be it further resolved that notice of the adoption of the resolution and of the time, place, and manner of holding the auction must be given pursuant to NRS 244.282, Number 2, and NRS 244.282-3, passed and adopted this 28th day of April, 2022.
If you go in the backup, you'll see that NRS is 244.282, and it explains what the clerk needs to do in the auction procedures.
And if I may, Commissioner, if, when the motion is made and voted in, the clerk's office will send a notice of public hearing and auction. And I'm going to read you the pertinent part because it may answer some questions as to the procedure that's going to be used at the auction. Notice is hereby given that the Lander County Board of County Commissioners will conduct a public hearing regarding Resolution 2022-03, a resolution declaring Lander County's intention to sell real property, requirements of sale, notice and procedure for conducting sale by auction. The auction will be held at a public meeting of the board at its regular place of meeting on May 26, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. in the Commission Chambers of Lander County Courthouse, 50 State Route 305, Battle Mountain, Nevada. Sealed bids will be opened and considered at this time. The public is invited to submit written bids to the office of the Lander County Clerk at 50 State Route 305, Battle Mountain, Nevada. All written bids submitted to the clerk must be received by 5:00 p.m. on the 25th day of May, 2022. Any and all bids made after this date must be made orally at the scheduled public hearing where the auction will be held and where the written bids will be opened, after which the board shall call for oral bids. So I'm not reading the whole thing that the clerk's office is going to publish. They will be publishing it for at least three weeks. But I've read you the pertinent part so people will know what they need to do if they want to submit a bid, either orally or in written form.
So now I can do a second motion?
Yes.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Do we want to call for public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, we need public comment.
I was just wondering why you're selling this? And, I mean, it's Little Giant Canyon Road? Is that what I heard? Is that Galena?
No.
Why are you guys looking at me?
So it's Honeywell's property out there where their gravel pit is? It sits right behind that?
Say that again, Brian.
Honeywell's property out there where they have their gravel pit? It sits right behind that? So their property's here and it sits right behind it?
Going toward Austin?
Yeah, I know where you're talking. I was just wondering why all of a sudden you're selling it?
Well, they asked to buy it.
There was an interest in buying it, yeah.
And they came in front of the Commissioners and made a request to buy it. And we researched it and found out that we could not sell it directly to them, that it would be in the best interest of the public to sell it at auction. And so that everyone anywhere, basically, can submit a bid to it.
Okay, I was just curious. I didn't know where it was, what it, you know, what it was all about, so.
It's just a piece of property behind their current gravel pit. And really, no one else has access to it from the road, but it's kind of landlocked.
And it's not a Green Canyon, right?
No, no, no.
That was.
No, it's right out there.
Visible from 305.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion. Kathy seconded it. No more public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Agenda item number four, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the renewal of premium rates for Anthem Health Benefits for 2022, 2023.
I saw the new rates, but I didn't remember the old rates, and there was no backup, so.
Well, we have current rates and the renewal rates. It looks to me like the only thing, if this is correct, the only thing that's gone up is our dental.
Correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
That's correct.
I think that's, they've had a lot of dental, a lot.
He did a really good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape here.
And dental for the annual premium, our current rates, $97,803 is going up to $107,664.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal rates and stay with Anthem for our health benefits for 2022 to 2023.
I'll second the motion.
Kathy made the motion. Brian seconded. Any public comment on insurance? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Number five, discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the operating plan between Lander County Fire Protection District and the United States Department of the Interior, Bureau of Land Management, Battle Mountain District, Elko District, presented by Tim Howell. Come on up, Tim.
Andy Bertelson in place, Tim Howell is on fire assignment.
Morning, Andy.
Now we know.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Push the button for us, pretty please. Thank you.
You can sit down and be comfortable if you'd like.
I'm fine if it's a little warm.
Okay.
So the only thing that...
Excuse me, are you Tim?
No, again, sorry, I'm Andy Bertelson here in place of Tim Howell. He's on a fire assignment in New Mexico.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome. The only thing that, the main part of this that we wanted to ensure was read was the payment part of this. Sorry, I don't know your process. I'm just getting right to the point I was told about. The routing of payment is through NDF. And as long as everybody's aware of that, I think we're all on board with the plan.
I believe that's the way it's always been.
Yes, so this is our standard agreement. Nothing's really changed in this agreement. The reason it says "draft" across the front of it is because that was for reference of the past agreement. But nothing has really changed in this agreement from what we've done in the past.
Didn't I see somewhere that this is five years, though?
I don't believe it's five years. I believe every two years, this is brought back before us.
I thought I read something in there. Well, let me look.
And I could be mistaken, Patsy. I did not...
Well, I know we read a lot of different things, and I didn't make a note on it, but for some reason...
I don't, right there, you're, so it's last page, number eight, is the operating plan to execute as stated in the last signature and remains in effect for five years from date of the last signature unless modified or superseded. So the last...
Oh, it is five years.
We must have...
So that's different.
The process would have been five years ago, right? Okay?
Yeah. I know that every year this comes back before you guys. It must not have been for approval, though. It must just come before you, because yearly this is brought back before you. But, so I apologize for not seeing that. But I thought that this is a yearly thing that comes back before you. I thought it was a two-year contract as opposed to five.
I thought it was shorter, too. I think the five years is new, I really do.
So are we going to leave it or put it out of two years? Like, we try to have everything else so we're consistent? Or just leave it at five?
They can be modified or anything, so I'm okay with the five. It gives us the opportunity to, you know, do anything else with it.
This is updated, like, say, every year they come back before you guys with, you know, if we have a big fire season, if there's other things that change, then this comes back before you.
Yeah, you're right. We talk about this every year. It's a matter of transparency where the funds are going, and we fund this program every year.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Are you ready for a motion, sir?
Yeah, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the operating plan between Lander County Fire Protection District and the United States Department of Interior, Bureau of Land Management, Battle Mountain District, Elko District, as presented.
I'm, Brian, while you're doing that, I was a little uncertain over who we're supposed to sign. They've got two places, so to authorize the signature, do they need our chair and our county manager, or?
The previous one did have Keith's signature on it. I'm not sure if you guys would like the chair to sign as well.
Well, there's two places for official titles, so I just wanted to be clear.
As long as we have an official signature, that's the unfortunate.
Commissioners, I want to point out something. You were talking about the five years. And Bartolo is absolutely correct. It usually comes every year for any changes. And this contract, once signed, will supersede the contract we made in 2018.
2018, right.
2019, there were no changes.
Okay.
So this supersedes the 2018 contract, and that's what will probably happen in the future. Yeah, so number seven, you'll notice this operating plan is reviewed annually by May 1st and revised as needed. So every May 1st, as Bartolo pointed out, all the parties get together and they decide if there's going to be modifications or changes. And then that contract will supersede this contract.
Patsy, do you want me to just approve the motion that we authorized the county manager to sign?
And the chair, I believe. And it did have, so, no, so it has Sean's signature on it as well in the past. So it had both Keith and Sean's in the past, so maybe we should just stick with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to modify?
I'll make my motion to reflect that.
Oh, seconded. Okay, Brian made the motion. JR seconded it. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove an amount not to exceed $7,500 for the June 18, 2022 Austin Roping Gridly Days Cowboy Contest hosted by Austin Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. My name's Miranda Tremaine, and I'm the Office Coordinator for the Austin Chamber of Commerce. This year, the Chamber decided to bring back Gridly Days. It's a family event full of vendors and games for kids and for the adults as well. It's got food, and we are planning on doing flower sack races and live music. When I reached out on social media for vendors, Jess Jones with Outlaw Bronx reached out to the Chamber asking to host a roping. I think this is huge for Southern Lander County. It'll help Gridly Days double in size, and we haven't had a roping in 20-plus years. The Chamber does plan to keep a roping for Gridly Days in the future and possibly a rodeo. But the Chamber does need a little bit of support this year as it, you know, it was sprung on us and it wasn't able to be budgeted. The Chamber has reached out to several sponsors to support this roping, and we're just waiting to hear back from them. But I, we chose to reach out to Lander County for support because it's been a longtime event that has not happened in, you know, a very long time. And we think that it'll benefit Southern Lander County tremendously. You can see on the quote that I submitted with my agenda request form, it shows that the costs will include buckles, announcer, cattle, judges, sound if needed, and supplies needed to have the event. I did contact Jess to ask him if that total did include the mutton busting for the kids, and that was included. And the Chamber does plan on taking care of the rooms and the hay that they've asked to be donated. And I think with the support of the Austin Chamber of Commerce with Gridly Days and the support from Lander County with the roping, I do believe that we can support Southern Lander County businesses and help them come back from the impact of COVID and, you know, let them flourish for the tour. and, you know, let them flourish for the tourism that we, we do need to support.
How, how many people will you have? How many participants do you think you'll have there?
Honestly, it's been so long since they've had a roping that it's one of those things that this year we're gonna have to see. We do have a lot of feedback. Um, there's been multiple, um, people that have reached out to have rodeos, to have separate ropings for four-H, for, go ahead.
Go ahead. So Jess has bought ACTRA points. There are a lot of members in our community that belong to the ACTRA. It's the American Cowboys Team Roping Association. So, um, what this does is a qualifier for the ACTRA finals, so this potentially could get quite a few team ropers coming to our town.
Yeah, and there's not, uh, any rodeos or ropings in central Nevada and I think that that will really draw in a big crowd of people as well.
Seventy-five hundred dollars you're asking for, or seventy-five hundred dollars plus three to four rooms and two tons of hay?
Nope, just the seventy-five hundred dollars. The chamber will, the chamber will cover the rest, yep.
Patty, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't, uh, when we donated to little guys, was it, there was a question brought up to when we donated, what were they using the money for? Cause it couldn't be used for something specific and I don't recall what.
Prize money?
So it will, ours will be used for the stock contractor and any prizes associated with that, he will take care of. We will not be buying any prizes.
And that's just, you know.
That is covering the stock contractor.
The total is just for the contractor and he, he's filling in the rest, so.
And commissioners, if, if you, uh, if you agree to this, then I would ask that you find, in your motion, you would make a finding that it is in the best interest of the inhabitants of Lander County to give this money. Because that's a prerequisite, since they're not a five oh one C three.
Yeah.
Before you give them any money, you have to find that it's in the best interest of the inhabitants of Lander County.
May I?
Uh, Paula was on, but she had to jump off and she said, one of you two know what to relay on behalf of her.
Okay, I was just gonna ask, cause Paula Tamira, um, was gonna try and be on, but she had another appointment this morning, so it depended on our timeframe. But I did speak with Paula because, um, Miranda's been in touch with her, of course, and, uh, Commission on Tourism is giving quite a bit. Uh, they're, they'll be doing the advertising. They also are giving an extra two thousand dollars, uh, which could help with the, um, the hay and the motel rooms or whatever. So there's several things that they have stepped up to do. So it's just, as Miranda said, just the base that if we've got the seventy-five hundred that takes care of what the whole event is going to be, then we're gonna worry about the other expenses along with it, so. She's done a good job for, for starting out, you know, really.
Six months ago.
Yeah, and, and, and our first ones, so.
Convention and tourism, uh, um, will be paying for the music as well.
The live music, yep, yep. And I think that that, that will help a lot with everything, yeah, yeah. And definitely make it a two d, like a two-day event so that we do get heads in beds and get that tax money for Lander County.
Did you go to school here?
I went to school in Elko. But.
I, I'm just confused because your last name's Tremaine.
Yeah, so Paul and.
Thought I knew all of Tremaine.
Paul and Sharon Tremaine are my in-laws. I'm married to Travis Tremaine, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we need, uh.
I will make a motion that we approve the seventy-five hundred dollars, um, for the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two Austin roping gridley days, um, which will be hosted by the Austin Chamber of Commerce because it is in the best interest of our citizens of Lander County.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Patty made the motion, Kathy and Brian both enthusiastically seconded it. Um, any public comment? I love doing this stuff.
All right, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it.
Call for a vote? Okay, everybody votes aye, you know, and thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Oh, update from the Porter Group. Where are they at?
They're, they're back in Washington, so we have to, I don't.
Yeah, I, I, I'm glad they are, not me.
Um, hello commissioners, it's Chris Porter with the Porter Group. Good morning. I just wanna do an audio check to make sure you can all hear me.
This is an update from the Porter Group. That's what's written.
Can you hear, yeah, I hear him good.
I can hear.
You hear me okay?
Yeah.
Commissioners?
Yeah. Everybody else can, but I can't.
Good morning. Fair enough, sir. Um, uh, again, this is Chris Porter with Porter Group. Thank you so much for having us. Um, I have Congressman Porter here, um, my illustrious father. If you'd like to say a few words first and I'll go into my quick update.
Uh, good morning, everyone. I, I have a similar hearing challenge at times, so, uh, I understand. Uh, it's an honor to, uh, to be on the call today and to be able to work with all of you and your team. I think many of you know that we are a family business, uh, and in Washington, uh, that, that's unusual. Uh, with family business, I'm, I'm really excited to, to have a, a team of individuals with, with Chris at the lead, uh, doing everything they can on a daily basis, working with you and, and, and with your county manager, uh, all, all the great work that you're doing collectively. Uh, as, as you know, things are unique in Washington and I, and, and I think I did hear you say, I'm glad that the, the Porter family's in DC and not, uh, you, Commissioner. But again, I, I don't wanna, uh, burn up a lot of your time, cause I know you're very busy, but just know we're here, uh, every day, uh, looking for ways to, to be helpful. And again, it's an honor to be part of your team here, so I'll turn it back to Chris.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna start off with some good news this spore, uh, good news this morning. Um, we have been working with your team with Bert and Aaron and Paula on community project funding requests, which are the earmarks that Congress brought back this year. Um, actually, last year, but they're continuing it this year. And I got off the phone, uh, recently to Congressman Amity's office, um, just a couple hours ago. In one of the projects that we put in for, which is the restoration of the Lemire Building, um, I was told by the congressman's office that they're gonna be able to put a million dollars, uh, towards that restoration project for the Lemire Building. So we're super excited about that. Of course, it goes through the appropriations process, so, um, as soon as Congress passes that, which will be the end of the year, uh, then we'll have more updates on that. Um, but I also would like to say that, uh, the other projects are still in, but the Senate, uh, the Senate side. Uh, and we could possibly get more funding for some of the other projects as well, like the Community Health Initiative, Austin Community Center, um, the potable water main line off of I eighty there and the levee project. So those, we're still keeping our fingers crossed that, um, the Senate will choose some of those as part of their request. Uh, but I wanna emphasize that they do receive hundreds and hundreds of requests. And Congressman Amity was only able to choose ten out of hundreds and one of them was your project there in Lander County. Uh, so we're super excited about that, so congratulations to, to the team, um, with, uh, Bert and Aaron and Paula for all the hard work that you did on that, cause I know it wasn't easy. So congratulations there. Um, I also wanna give, of course, an update on the land bill. Uh, we've been working with your staff there at the county, um, in, in the Senator's, Senator Rosen's office, in the Senate Energy, uh, and Commerce Committee on fine tuning, uh, the language that we have now, met them a few times. Um, we are, uh, we are making progress on, on the necessary tweaks, um, to the language that will be appropriate for the Senate Energy and Commerce Committee, uh, to be able to give us an okay on the bill. Um, the next internal deadline that we have as the team with the county is the middle of May, so in two weeks. Um, what we're doing is we're making some updates to the maps and some of the parcel map. Um, and then we'll have a follow-up meeting with the Senate Energy and Natural Resources staff, uh, to discuss those. Um, I guess as part of kind of detailing what's gonna happen the rest of the year with this. Um, the committee wants to start marking up all the lands bills in Nevada, uh, probably early, uh, to mid-June. Um, so we're setting ourselves up perfectly for that. Um, we suspect that the final version of our lands bill, um, will be mid-summer, early fall, um, is my, my guesstimation by the time it goes through the markup process. Um, and then what happens after that is the two chambers, the House and the Senate, uh, will start offering, uh, both the House bill, our House bill and also our Senate bill. Um, and that should start around mid-summer, early fall as well, kind of same timeline. Um, then what happens after that is our ultimate target and the senators' target is to have our lands bill in the larger land omnibus, omnibus packages, which would include all the Nevada lands bills, um, as part of the National Defense Authorization Act. Um, and we think that should occur sometime around November, early December, and we do suspect final passage, um, sometime before the Christmas break. Um, you know, Congress does take a little bit of time, but we are very optimistic and I think that, um, with all the hard work from, from Bert and Aaron and Paula and the rest of your team, uh, we're in a great place to see this bill, um, included in the NDA and passed by the end of the year.
Hush, nice, very nice.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, thank you, thank you. We, uh, uh, shoutouts to your team and to all of you.
Good job to all the hard work that was put into all of this.
Thanks, Bert, Paula.
Paula and the staff.
Any questions for the Porter Group? I don't hear any. Okay, thank you very much for your, for your time and your hard work. Number eight.
Thank you. Thank, thank, thank you very mu, very much. Uh, I'd like to do a quick shout-out, uh, Commissioner Waits. It's, uh, always a pleasure to hear your voice. I appreciate your friendship for so many years, so it's good to hear your voice and hope things are well for all of you and your families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be safe back there.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Item number eight. Update from Rick Harless, uh, in the Battle Mountain Fire Department. Come on up, Chief Rick.
Morning, Rick. So I guess this, um, primarily is to, uh, update you that we do have a plaque, Carly. So kindly had it made and, uh, prepared, so we're gonna, uh, hand this out to the, uh, Fire Chief in the Fire Department in the City of Elko.
Did you read it for us, so we know what it says?
Uh, yeah, it says, uh, City of Elko Fire Department in honor and recognition for the donation to the Battle Mountain Fire Department. Yeah, doesn't that look cool?
Yes.
Yeah. I think this was, uh, unprecedented donation that they, they gave to us, you know. The truck is in excellent condition and I brought it out, if you guys wanna go look at it, I thought you oughta at least see what we're talking about here.
Can we take a break and do that for a five breaks? It's not on the agenda, but it's still a meeting.
Well, if you take a break, we can do what we want.
Take a few minutes breaks so we can look at ours.
You could certainly do that, I mean, you're almost in a meeting.
Oh, okay, let's, we'll finish the meeting.
Yeah, take a break and we'll go.
If you wanna take a break and go look at it and make comments on the record, you can do that, otherwise.
You made up my mind there, counselor. Let's, let's take a break and go see the truck and then we'll come back.
Okay, sounds good.
Time on the lab. There, uh, we, we went down there and, uh, looked at it.
And, um, we found a few little things that we wanted fixed, needed fixed, so they're doing all that. They're actually re, rebuilding the hydraulic control valve right now.
Okay.
And I just talked to them this morning. It should be in next week. Like everything, it's pretty slow getting parts and.
Yeah, we're, we're back on number eight and we're talking to Chief Rick Harless.
I would like to make a motion that the commissioners write an appreciation letter to go with the plaque. Um, I, I think the truck is awesome.
I didn't just update only.
It's just an update only, you can't.
We'll have to make an agenda.
The odd.
You guys could direct the interest.
Okay, just direct.
Oh, shucks.
No, we'll just direct, direct Bert to do it, to do it, um, appreciation.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a motion, yeah.
It can just be direction to staff.
Yeah, is that okay with everybody? Think we should. It, it truly is. It looks great.
Any questions for Rick?
No, I, I do wanna say something, though. Rick's new in there and busting his tail. He's collaborating, has all these departments working together. Um, and it's his hard work and going over there and building a relationship with Elko, the City of Elko, that got this donated to us and it's, it's a pretty big deal. That's, uh, commendable in itself, so.
Yes, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, you bet. All right, well.
Thank you.
We'll have to get the letter done and, like, it'll all go together.
Yeah, yeah, let me know when it's ready and we'll get it to him.
We're gonna go back.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. We're gonna go back and reopen number four since Tim is here, so he can tell us how good we've done with insurance. Because it's looking good.
Morning, Tim.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, Tim Howell with LP Insurance. Um, originally Anthem did come for a seven percent increase in the rates. Um, that is pretty much due to what we call trend. And trend usually averages between eight to twelve percent. Um, it's an interesting world out there right now. A lot of investment portfolio platforms are buying emergency rooms and buying hospitals for investment, which should scare us, uh, if they're seeing the prospect of making money on our healthcare system. So a lot of these big portfolios are doing that. Everything with COVID costs, uh, that was a staggering number and will continue to, um, be felt for years. We, the cases are down, the admissions are down, but just the cost of that is gonna be very, very high and, um, that is getting passed on to the consumer. But we were able to negotiate this down to a zero percent increase, which was fantastic. Um, the counties that are surrounding you do not have that. Due to, uh, the luck of having the U of U, um, having that hospital in place. Every single healthcare company wants to contract with the U of U, but they're very selective in who they contract with. So your Signis, your Hometown Health, your, um, your local Sierra Health and Life, Health Plan of Nevada, they all want the U of U, but the U of U will not contract with them. So it does mean that we deal with the nationals, we deal with the Anthems, they deal with the Aetnas, um, prominence is, is there. But having that and how often they fire up helicopters is also a thing, which we discussed a little bit earlier in that, uh, I believe last month's meeting or the month before, where the air med systems are, um, doing it. And the, the last is we had a bill called the Balanced Bill Act, or No Surprises Act, um, which would stop balance billing. And that is being, uh, challenged by hospitals. So our Congress of the United States is trying to cap any type of balance billing where you might go into a hospital setting and you are unconscious and you're being seen by an out-of-network anesthesiologist and an out-of-network radiologist and you have no control of that. But you're gonna get billed for it outside of your health plan. So they're really trying to put caps on that, but obviously the, the hospitals' networks are trying to take them to court to disallow these things. It's called balance billing. So all in all, um, I thank you. Thank you for letting me serve you. Um, thanks to the county for letting me be here and, um, yeah, enjoy these times. Enjoy the zero percents and enjoy that, um, cause things tend to trend.
Highly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Tim? No questions. Hey, thanks, Tim. Now, we're gonna go back to.
Number nine?
Number nine. Oh my goodness, update from Sheriff Ron Unger regarding the I eighty closer on June eighteenth from nine PM to five AM. Discussion, possible action on country, county participation. You're having a big barbecue at your place out here.
Pardon me?
Did barbecue, you're gonna get one of your.
Sure.
I thought that's what you were staging all those times.
Yeah, lots of luck with that. All right, well, at the last meeting, it, uh, uh, it was brought up, so what I did after the last meeting, I, I got, uh, uh, one of the city maps that we have and I highlighted the areas to where vehicles could park, uh, where the restrooms and water facilities were. I made the map, I believe. Bert has it. I didn't know if you guys got it, but I gave it to Kathy, cause she's the one that's gonna get a lot of the telephone calls. So we have a lot of parking. I visited with some, uh, private owners. Uh, Jenny, Turkey Aga over there, she's got property by the, uh, McDonald's. And she said if we need to use that, flying and dandy, uh, over by the storage sheds also if we need it. But this is the major part right here. Uh, it involves the rodeo grounds across the street from the rodeo grounds. Uh, and I kinda figured if, if it does go long, we may have some bullwagons are doing a lot of hauling now. Uh, they may have to unload cattle and water them up there, so we'll try to kid all the livestock at the rodeo grounds and some of the big motorhomes. But we have the Flying J, we have from the Al parking lot. But we have the Flying J, we have from the Owl Parking Lot down to the Big Chief Motel for trucks if we need it. We've got the parking lots, uh, by the Civic Center. I talked to the Lemires. They said we could use that piece of ground right across the street between Eighth and Seventh there if we need it. We've got, uh, uh, Elquist Park and where we have the bonfire, that area. So it's all been highlighted there, so we're ready for that. Our, we're not anticipating a lot. We've got the Civic Center and we can, if need be, put up cocks and blankets there for people with vehicles that need to rest, maybe the elderly. There's water bathrooms. So most of the places that we described there, uh, other than, uh, the railroad property, uh, and over there, uh, that would be the biggest area. Most every place, they've got the restroom facilities. I've talked to Donnie and Bert. Uh, they will make sure the restrooms are going at the Lions Club and the, uh, rodeo grounds area. Uh, we'll make sure that everything's good there. The biggest issue I think we're gonna face is the GPSs that these people got. I know that the, uh, DOT is gonna be shutting down the highway. So like 401 and 402, uh, which is the airport road, uh, that goes out to Skyline and then the road on the other side, the freeway, 402. Then that road, both them roads will take you to Dumpey, uh, Argenna and to Dumpey. So I talked to Donnie. Uh, we're gonna try to get some road signs maybe and put up no-through traffic on those, because they will try to go around that. It was told to me that the, uh, DOT on their alternate routes, uh, they put Hilltop Canyon as one of the alternate routes. Uh, so we're gonna try to stop Hilltop Canyon, Mule Canyon, Mill Creek. Uh, we're gonna try to put some road signage out to stop them from there. We're gonna try to get some road signages out north Battle Mountain, because some of them will try to go north over Antelope Creek and, and then the back way to get around that. So I've made a call to Eureka County Sheriff to let him know what we're doing, because there will be people, I'm gonna tell you what, that's gonna throw up their GPS and they're gonna try to get around this. And they're, let them try. But the problem that is, if the, if you send a semi uphill Hilltop Canyon or up Mill Creek or whatever, they're gonna get crossways somewhere up there, tipped over. Now we're gonna have to send our EMS out there or the County Sheriff's Department to deal with that. And that's gonna take away from town. So that's kind of what we've done at this point. Uh, I, uh, we were out on a fire call the other morning at two o'clock in the morning on I-80, and the cars at two o'clock in the morning was about a mile apart, to give you an idea. So this is shutting down at nine o'clock till five in the morning. I don't believe it's gonna take that long, but it could. Uh, but I think we're looking at a short-term deal here, myself personally. There will be a lot of traffic stopped on the freeway. I'm assuming that's gonna happen. That's gonna have to be Highway Patrol and Endot deal with that, because we're gonna keep our deputies kind of here in town and shooting people where they need to go.
Thank you very much.
And we will have some water available, you know. Uh, we, we looked at that. The sheriff's office does have some available. We'll put some in the patrol cars where people late at night don't want to get out of their cars or whatever. We can take care of that. But I don't know what else we've missed, but I'm open for suggestions or thoughts that we may have overlooked.
Kim Schott, Lander County, you missed. I just want to try to find... We will have deputies overnight in Austin, as that's the same day as our gridley days.
Oh, the same day that's your gridley days?
Yeah.
Yeah, there starts on them.
But it will be late at night, so we're hoping we'll be okay.
Our guys, I think the traffic going down there is gonna be that. But as far as the gridley days, I'll get with the sergeant and we'll have people there for the two-day event there.
Okay, perfect. All right.
It's gonna be pretty exciting down there. Gonna be exciting down there.
It could, because that roping's a big event, guys. You look at Winnemucco when they have a roping and they load them up. So there could be a big event down there. And most of it's gonna be at the rodeo grounds, let's face it. Uh, but yeah, we'll be available. And them, them rodeo people, they don't raise much heck anyway. They have fun, but they're, they're quite a, they're a good group.
The way Endot explained it initially was that local traffic only will be able to get past where they have their signs and their barriers. I guess they'll have their people there.
They'll just put up signs and it'll say "local traffic only" and, and let's face it, most of these people can't read anyhow, so... They can't. I can prove that, guys. I mean, this is the first time we've had this show here in town. And, oh my goodness, if it says "go here" on that GPS, that's where they're gonna go.
Well, they do it. They do it in Lake Tahoe all the time. I mean, and they, and they get stuck. How they think they can get around when there's an exit and then they can't.
Well, we just had a...
Sir.
Are you going to, uh, need the county road and bridge to help in any way?
I've talked to Donnie and Bert also, and they have said whatever we need, they're more than happy to help.
We, I made this, we made this an action item, in case you want, uh, commissioners to take a vote on that and agree that the county will give you all the help.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I know. I'll definitely make a motion that the county, um, services utilize...
One word with the sheriff's office in any way possible.
Yes, so, so yes, I'll make the motion that the county...
Do we need a motion?
Well, I, my didn't have my finger...
I was asking...
Well, it's an action item. You can make a motion or not make a motion.
Maybe it goes unspoken.
Or it just goes unspoken that they can utilize, um, our services, so...
Kathy made a motion. Patsy seconded it?
No, that's definitely not...
Any public discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I said Kathy made the motion and Patsy seconded it.
Okay, Kathy made the motion, Patsy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you, but I, I'd like to tell you, I've never once in this career sheriff had any problems with the road and bridge or anybody else who ran out of gas or help.
It was an action, you know, never let any opportunity go...
Cool. But it, can you think of anything that I may have forgotten or is there more needs?
For doing that.
Yeah, not a problem. And if we run into something, we'll just deal with it. We'll take care of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Correspondence reports future agenda items.
Okay, so a couple of things. Um, first is what I want to say is, you know, a lot of people wonder if, if what we're doing with Porter's worth what we're paying him, because we pay him quite a bit. And I just want some of these things with what, you know, like AM Engineering, Porter and Paula, all of us working together, you know, that's, that's a million dollars to the credit of Lander County right there in that one, one thing that we got through. And we have a whole bunch more coming down the pipeline. So we, we are getting some returns on our investment. Um, and we, we're putting a lot of time in to get them returns, but it's, it's paying back. Um, but the other thing that I, that I want to start putting on the radar of this commission, because it's gonna come before us in this next county commission meeting, is, uh, we still have development happening in the county and it's perfectly by the law. Um, you know, a couple of houses here and there, but it depends on how they divide. So, so my thoughts are, and, and something that I would like to maybe see as a, as a future agenda item, is doing some, uh, um, developer improvement match funding. Because what we're seeing right now is, for example, downtown, the sidewalk project we're putting in. These developments that are coming in, they're, they're coming in and they can do the couple of houses here and there, but we don't get curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights and the things that make, uh, that we're coming back later and doing anyway. So what my thoughts are is maybe we put something out there to where, if you go to, if you go to Fernley, you go to Fallon, you go to any of these other cities, you, you can drive into a subdivision that has curb, gutters, sidewalk, streetlights, um, paved streets, and they have a kiosk there at the front that shows, um, different floor plans of houses with a bunch of empty lots. And somebody comes and picks their house and nine months later they build a home. Um, well, if the county's already fronting this because we, we aren't being proactive, um, we're already paying for the curb, gutter and sidewalk and the paving later anyway. Uh, you've, and these guys are following the letter of the law by building what they can. And I, um, so maybe we, maybe we take the names off of it and we start looking at how, how can we make better developments for our community? Maybe we work with these developers and say, hey, you come before us and you show us where you're gonna make, uh, subdivision and provide the map, provide all this. You're gonna have to extend the water lines, you're gonna have to extend the sewer lines. But we'll come in, uh, after you get the roads up to the pavable standard, we'll pave the road, do the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and then we can start actually developing where we aren't coming back later. Because if you drive through town, we have people that have built their fences up against the back of the curb. And now that we're putting in sidewalk, we're removing fences, we're removing landscaping, we're removing all these things that people have kind of used as their, as their own. And it, and it causes more work for us, disturbance to the, to the community a little bit, and a little bit tougher, um, on the bids, because we're coming back, we're replacing their fences back four feet. So at the end of the day, we're paying more for it and not getting the quality product when we start out. So that's something I want the commission to consider in, in the name of development. It, it doesn't sound very good, but when you look at it from, from a step back and, and the structure of what it does for your community, it's, it's kind of where we're going anyway.
It's like the, the concrete or the sidewalks that gone on that we've had to remove fence and that kind of stuff. Is that because it was built in the county right away?
Correct. And, and you know, um, for example, if you drive out by the golf course, we have some really nice homes out there, but there are no sidewalks. You know, you see the kids riding their bikes out in the middle of the street, which is gonna happen anyway. But, um, but if, you know, somebody wants to build a nice four or $500,000 home, it'd be nice for them to walk down a sidewalk as well when they want to go out for an evening stroll. Um, if the county's gonna come back later, you know, even if it's, for example, in the middle of town, it might be 20 years later, we're gonna come back and we're gonna put curb, gutter and sidewalk in anyway, at, at our expense for our community members. So we might just think about trying to be proactive on this. Um, and so when I brought this up, I, I brought thi- I pitched this at Aaron, and Aaron said, hey, we got a storefront improvement program over in Elko County that, that blew up and was just wonderful. Um, they did a match. And I don't, I'm not real familiar with how they did the match, but they did, they did a matching program where if a business owner put $5,000 in, they matched it up to, um, a certain number, whether that was $20,000 or $15,000 per business. So you get a $30,000 facelift, um, if you were matching at 15 or up to. So this, this sounds like a, um, uh, handout, but in reality, it's, it's our community. And if we're gonna do this, we're already doing it. It's just we're doing it 10 years down the road and with, with more hurdles to cross than if we just worked with some of our developers from the start. And, and I know that when, at the next meeting when this comes forward, you guys are gonna see exactly what I'm talking about, when we have big parcels of land, that they're only taking a couple small parcels out of to build a home or two on, um, because they can't afford to put in the curb, gutter, sidewalk and go through with a, um, you know, true subdivision. So if we, if we can do some sort of match, we can benefit our community, I do believe. We're doing it anyway.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda.
And so with that, the master plan said our houses are, are, are terming out for, um, property taxes. So we have to do something to bring in some, you know, new homes that, um, can bring in property tax. So that goes right along with, um, the enticement of that.
So if you guys would like, I would, I would like to put it on the agenda.
I think it's great. I think we should put it on the agenda. And along with, with what we're encouraging humans to do, I don't want us to forget trees. I think that's a very important part. So especially when developments come in, I want, I want to see the trees. And I think that's important. So if you want to do the match on the trees or whatever, um, but I think we need to encourage that and make sure it doesn't go by the wayside and they don't have enough money for it.
Well, and this county commission, as well as the planning commission, has all the authority in the world to attach whatever stipulations you guys would like to these developments. Um, you know, following the letter of the law or not, the ultimate authority falls on you guys to make the decision for the community and these, and the developers have to follow that, so...
Other than that, I don't have anything else that I'd like to...
Looks like Aaron has something to say.
Just one item, Herr Martinez, for the record. Uh, did you want those, the original kind of this project discussion was to take those items to the LITA board and have LITA create kind of a spitball session about the initiatives that Bert's outlined today? And then try to bring that packet to this board as kind of a recommendation from that board to spearhead some of these economic development initiatives? Is that still what you'd like on that?
Well, I was thinking that I would like this board to at least pursue the, the mass, the subdivision development. And then, and then LITA attached to that to, uh, continue that on with their, with their plan. But to, to match the money, the only board that can do that is this one.
Yeah, absolutely. I was trying, I guess the idea was is that the leader would do heavy lifting to try to bring you, uh, everything from the idea of total amounts to the recommendation of that component and then also application criteria that, you know, which board would be actually sending those applications to this board for approval. Uh, so it seemed like LITA was a good mechanism, uh, and also engage that board in, into these economic development initiatives. And we have, as Bert knows, four of those initiatives on, uh, the next agenda. If that's what you'd like, I just want to make sure.
No, we'll still put it on this agenda. We will also incorporate LITA, no doubt. Aaron's on spot on with, with us incorporating LITA. We aren't leaving our other boards, planning and zoning, or LITA out of this, but with the, with the items that will be on this next agenda, I will, would like this commission to start moving in that direction, because without your guys' move, you know, then LITA does nothing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, public comment. For everybody and anybody, if you're on the phone. Now I'll entertain a motion. Okay, Brian made a motion. Kathy seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Bye, Austin.